I'm being seven thirty-seven. I will call the regular session of the Kansas State Council to order. And we, I need to announce that we had an executive session on the matter of personnel with potential action at seven o'clock this evening. And we also held an executive session on the matter of personnel with potential action on June fourteenth. Can we have the, let's remove it.
And the councilman, yeah. The councilman Gary.
Here.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Ploton and Anna from. Pete Myers.
Here.
Steve Ness.
Here.
E M P Waddle.
Here.
Manager Sivers.
Here.
We have four.
Please approve of the agenda. Are there any items to add or removed from the consent agenda or the regular agenda?
I have a question. On the agenda under, um, part, probably in part rec.
Yes.
There is, um, action to approve a flint for July ninth, possibly, but that will not be needed. I want to know if we have to.
We could review that from the. I need amendment to changes to the proposed man. Sure motion for the approval of the agenda with that change regarding the discussion of possible action to approve the mechanics for school. Of the system, the on Saturday, July ninth, if necessary, put that in the table.
How much time? Not sure.
Does Iger make some motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Martin seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The agenda is approved. Give anyone citizens comment. This time we welcome citizens to approach supporting shape in the address and keep your remarks to three minutes. They allow three minutes at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Change none. Move on to the manager's report.
Thank you very much. May twenty-fifth, judged with the help of my wife Linda, sociology manager cities at the mechanics for high school. Followed a thank you card from the students. The twenty-sixth attended the two, twenty-twenty-two Cumberland County Friends of Scouting Breakfast at the West Shore Pet Club. Honored local business couple Ken Robinson and his wife Brenda of Robinson Associates for their try cunning scouting dedication. Third, memorial day parade sponsored by the Kingsburg Veterans. Lieutenant Commander Ten Hanger from the Carlisle War College was the guest speaker. Good weather, well attended. Thirdly, yet non-veterans held a memorial at Lincoln Cemetery. President Abraham Lincoln, represented by Doug Kirkland, present his two minute Gaysburg address. Historian Kevin Shaw gave a brief history of the cemetery and its surroundings. June one, Jersey T Simpson Library opening day for student summer reading at the Tristegod Community Center. Linda and I served popcorn for the event. The fourth and fifth, visited the Kingsburg Museum Sixtyth Celebration Exhibit. Displaying social and business history, the Kingsburg of the time. Open Wednesday, Saturday, noon to three, noon to three. Fourteenth, attended the, the Ca, the Kingsburg Museum Picnic held at Saint Paul's Church Christ. Kingsburg Singer Band performed. Sixteenth Jubilee Day, ninety-second, open on the square at noon, a special proclamation to the mayor's office. Calories don't count. Assisted veterans, American flag ceremony at the square at ten hundred hours on Saturday. A shout out to Bob Gary. Bob, the systems and color brother, both memorial Sunday, both memorial day ceremonies. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To observe across the street, friends of the library now have their collection building in front of their new building. Blue, a blue collection building for, uh, for books. And then report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager's report.
Uh, the only I have is some bookkeepers, some record keeping things that we've got to deal with here in the borough office. I met with third elements today. We're moving forward with cloud basing our email. So all that stuff will be out. The last box of documents was taken over the third element to scan up, uh, to scan in and go from there. Um, Arc of Central Pennsylvania has, it provided me a price and I've got to get it back to council for approval to do a large format drawings. So that we can scan those in and have those electronically. Uh, there's a few glitches to those with the Pennsylvania, uh, is the Pennsylvania record keeping, uh, guidelines that we have to meet. Uh, so I have to meet with them and finalize some things before I'm ready to present that to council. But, uh, and we're in the process of talking to Edmonds. Who does all of our building software and our property files, permit codes, the whole nine yards of getting that also cloud based. So, um, our scheduled server replacement in the front office will probably be a reduced price, uh, which will free up more space also for chief. And the car videos and the, uh, the body camera videos. So, uh, and maybe we can reduce the cost of server replacement. That's all I have right now.
Oh, yeah.
There's enough other than that one.
Moving on to consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I understand.
Does Iger make some motion? Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. O'Neill makes the second. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. If anyone's funding administration and ordinance, I'll take this over for Vice President Anthony who is out tonight. Uh, we have discussion on the application for Cumberland County Recovery Grant.
Uh, we're certainly over all the information that he and community gathered up. Uh, his staff is working on finalizing that end of it. Uh, we're going to proceed with requesting a total of, with our thirty percent match, two million dollars for the Broad Keller George Street project. Which is both storm water and the paving project up there. Um, and we're going to get sheet letters of support from the school district. Uh, and, uh, the municipal authority for the borough mechanics for it to proceed with those.
Could you say thirty percent match?
Yes, it's a thirty percent match.
Did, uh, Graham receive any guidance?
He spoke, yes.
The fifty percent match was too.
Nice. This one's a thirty percent. Uh, this is, it's, it's email and I, I double checked it last night. It's a thirty percent match. This is a different program. A different grant. No, this is the.
Cumberland County Recovery.
This is the Cumberland County Recovery Fund. Yeah, I was a little confused there. So.
Man, I thought that he said at the last meeting fifty percent.
He was pretty firm about that. He said about a fifty fifty if you want to really put forth the effort. Do you want to put up a million dollars? And have the county put up a million dollars. He said the thirty percent match would be for two million dollars would, is a little over what? Four hundred eighty thousand, five hundred thousand dollars is what we'd be looking at. So.
So what he thinks of tonight?
He thinks, uh, he's pretty, pretty confident that we can get it. Uh, Kirk's son is who he spoke to in the county planning office to get direction on it.
And those are due July first?
That's due July, July first, yes.
And that's not, you're not worried about that deadline, right?
No, he's, he's, he'll be back in the office, uh, the end of this week and then we'll have everything squared right here. I, I'm going to have time now to gather this stuff up. So, and get it over to him.
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to municipal community outreach, Councilman O'Neill.
Yes, um, having a report with the website project is moving forward. We're seeing some prototype spines from our contractor revise. And the committee will be, has been seen as hopefully making their recommendations to be reviewed this week at a meeting that is yet to be scheduled, but probably will be. So it is really no long. Personally, I like allowing live stream and, uh, we'll keep reporting as the weeks go on.
Thank you. Moving on to community economic results. Councilman Gary.
Nothing.
Have you sent EKU without Jubilee Day?
Yes, they were. They're running out of cords. Um, I did not actually run into them, so I'm not sure. I, I don't know how I missed them, but, uh, it was all people that read down. But, uh, they did send me a document where it had the QR code and something like that. So, um, but they were in town. I haven't heard how they did yet.
Moving on to public works and safety. Councilman O'Neill, would you like to take this one on?
Would.
Good job.
Um, we paid an action on a conditional offer on a permit to, um, I can't remember to be honest, just me.
No, it's, uh, I think we missed this one. We should have taken.
We should have taken that off too. I apologize. Yeah, yeah.
Should have taken this one off. We, um, so can't take action.
So that's an earlier version that I have wrote. I apologize. But that's a minor version of the agenda is, um, P P L L E D street light conversion update. You had, you see the information, the facts regarding how we had those discussions. Are there any questions about that?
Just, do you have a time schedule when that might start?
They, they, we can receive the executed contract. So we have, we'll copy the agreement back. Uh, they're waiting to set a date. They have to get, they're, they're going to make sure they have all of the, the materials first before they set a date. So as soon as I get that date, I will announce to everyone and we can proceed from there. So.
So is there any, like, are they going to give us phases or?
There is, there are, it's not going to be any, as we have time, it's going to be once they start, they're going to try to be consistent and go through and get them all taken care of.
How many light poles do we have approximately?
Seven hundred and seventy-five.
So the next item is street sweeper cost comparison.
May I just reserve EKU?
Sure. Now, I provide it tonight. Um, I apologize for that. I've been working on this right up until, uh, actually this afternoon. But the, as you can see on there, the schedule that we have on the website and the way it's worded, um, that every street will be cleaned one time per month during the sweeping season. April first through September first, uh, and then major roads, uh, will be cleaned every Thursday. So what that worked out to was approximately seventy-two hours a month. That was also based on looking at past timesheets. That's how long it took them to sweep certain areas. And, and things like that. So, and it, the order is what I have down below there. That's actually what's on the signage is that you see out on the street. That's the, the, uh, the tall side ones down below.
Yeah, certainly to it quickly. Certainly, certainly two hours. Is that just to meet the schedule below?
Yes, that's a month. That's seventy-two hours a month.
But just for the.
Yes, correct. That's nothing other than what's on the, than what's, I, it was, it was great. It was compare apples to apples. So. Uh, we did receive prices for Evercore, uh, from Evercore Facility Management. Um, we've had deals with them before as far as seeking bids for sweeping services and stuff. Uh, their driver was seventy-two dollars and ten cents an hour and the sweeper is a hundred and eighty twenty-five, a hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, the total cost for the month would be eighteen thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents. And then the five months that we sweep, we're looking at a little over ninety thousand dollars for that. Um, the job, the, the people that were here Jubilee Day who cleaned up for us for free. Uh, are the ones who provided us a quote that you see, uh, on the Vortech. P W X sure cleaning was a forty-eight month loan or lease. That includes maintenance stuff. Now, this is an old quote, but for comparison's sake, the monthly payment would be six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The, um, roughly estimated, uh, we would be an additional cost of twenty-five thousand a month for, um, or twenty-five hundred a month, sorry. For, um, fuel, insurance, personnel, uh, because we would have to provide the driver for that. So it gives you the comparison. Um, for Evercore to do it for five months, uh, we're looking at ninety thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars. For us to lease the machine, provide the personnel to do it, um, and we would have the machine for a year. The year would cost us ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. So I would get you to refresh this if council chooses to go that. But those are the numbers. They're looking at one or another.
Okay. Okay. I'm good because I'm older. Um, so there would be, uh, one where we would use our staffing. That, I mean, my question would be is you're taking someone out of doing other things. So the cost actually would be more.
We would have to bring somebody else in. Yes. This is just safe value cost. That, there's some background cost there also. Yes, you're correct.
And then should Evercore would follow the schedule?
Evercore, yes. They would have to follow the schedule. That would be part of what we would have to have them assign a little. Uh, they do have some other things that they offer other services also that we may be able to get that price down a little bit lower.
This was their hourly, like, just a per hour price. Did you engage or talk to them about if they have signed a contract for like five or six months, a year?
This is what they sent me.
Did that price go down?
No, this is what they sent me. This is, they, they charge per hour.
So.
It was done negotiations, what you're saying. And that's a draft, I think, right? Right.
So in negotiation, but if they're, if they're going to set up shop here, that would reduce their cost to.
That was what the original one was. The proposal they sent me was per hour.
Did we get quotes from any other vendors?
The other one that I talked to, they would, they, they didn't provide anything. Uh, there, there was nothing that they wanted to send back. They didn't, they weren't interested.
So you spent it too.
Sure.
One did not want to respond to a request for a quote. Is that, is one did not want to respond to a request?
They didn't want to deal with the, the in-town issues, the, the small turning raises. They didn't like the idea of using a smaller machine. They wanted to use a bigger machine. Which kind of makes sense. I mean, so they didn't like the tightness of the town. Um, and they didn't want anything to do with the, with sweeping the town.
And when did, when did that conversation occur?
That was back first, when we first did this, where the quote was from Evercore. Um, I don't have the Evercore quote with me, but it was back, it was early, I want to say at March April is when we did that, that discussion with them.
And the quote that we're looking at tonight from Evercore, that, that was at March April.
That was at March April, yep. They gave us a price of, flat rate of three thousand dollars to come in and clean up for Jubilee Day. And that included us providing water and dump for them. Um, I know Vortech wants to, would like to get something here because they're local. But, um, and they provided everything that they provided that night for nothing.
What, what's the, um, what's the useful life of the machine?
Depends on how it's taken care of.
Can you throw a dart for me? Do they, you?
I would imagine here the ten years was ten years.
I can't, I can't help but be struck by the drastic difference in pricing and wonder what's not in this comparison. Because it does not seem sensible to me that the purchase of a machine would be the same cost as using one for such a short period of time.
It's no idea.
Plus we have no staffing costs. We have no fuel costs. We have no repair costs. We have no housing costs. And I'm, I'm concerned that these numbers are not reflective of reality. It's, it's just, this particular financial decision is not, is not passing the first level test for me.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Anderson that we would have to take, we must pretty much have to take staff off of other things in order to do it. Where would you go to get outside? Would you go and get outside help? Would you try to hire an additional person if we ended up at the lease?
If we ended up at the lease, it'd probably look comparing someone else. Um, you know, I mean, I averaged the price of the guys at the highway rush, an hourly rate to come up with the twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Um, there's some of the times we average, there's a, a few that are down low. Um, to bring a new person in. We're looking at seventeen dollars an hour minimum to bring a new person in.
And then, I guess, with the staffing issues that we're having just in general, we're looking at having to bring someone in, train them. And so this is not an instant solution. So we would, we would be taking someone out of the highway department that you need.
Well, it's a side of the tournament of getting the, the machine. I mean, this is, he has two of them in stock. So he could get us a machine pretty quickly. Um, and he could do the training as far as putting someone in the machine. But the problem with it is, yes, we've been pulling somebody, we've been pulling somebody off, off the, the daily routine.
And you're still looking for people now.
I'm asked, yes, absolutely.
With no success and getting someone off the work. So.
So it seems like renting a machine and doing the labor ourselves is not the best way to go at this point. Should Evercore have a person currently, if we would choose that, that would come up?
We could maybe, yeah. We would like, as Councilman Jerry said, we would have to set up a schedule with them. And you, I think you asked a question also. We'd have to make sure that they're going to follow that, that schedule, that present schedule. Um, and at least put in the hours. They, they did purchase a firm out of Carlisle. So, um, this may, that made the, you know, they're a little closer. They're not coming from Columbia, like where their main office is at right now. So there is the opportunity there that they could, they could come in with a, a better drug. So, um.
I'd like to clarify just a little bit. Thank you for your explanations. Um, we're looking at a season that ends September first.
Correct.
So we're looking at essentially two months of service left in this particular season. And we're looking at expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars. And we have additional questions. And I'm just wondering whether this is something you should do. I mean, how much urgency is going to do this?
We're not, we're not on the agenda to make a decision. This is.
I, I, I'm saying that's, first it's back another two weeks minimum, four weeks potentially, you're practically done.
Yeah, but the ninety thousand dollars would be for the entire five months.
No, I understand.
We're not going to pay for five months.
We don't know whether they would give us a.
They return us per hour.
So, but the rate's going to stay the same since we're not signing this full season contract. Has been no negotiation.
Right. We, I have not followed up with that one. And, and he's absolutely correct. I have not followed up with that one. Once I got the quotes. Um, and realized the amount of money we were talking about doing, um, it, it was one of those things we, to start negotiating on something that we weren't sure exactly what direction council was going to go with it. It, it was one of those things, I can't give them anything solid. And these people are looking for something solid because quite frankly, as Greg said, they're, they're scared about, they're, they've got to work. We're trying to get home to sagecoats, you know, as it's leaving station.
So then my next question is, is, you know, because I feel strongly we need to sweep the streets because they're dirty and cluttered. Um, is there a way, if we're only two months, we only had, essentially have two months left of this, would they be willing to do like a two or three passes? Then we had talked about that. Like maybe we go back and ask if we can have, because the, the streets do need slack before the leaves start falling. And there's a lot of debris, I'm sure, that's going down in the storm drain.
Mm-hmm. I agree with Councilman Anderson completely. But having said that too, is there another municipality that owns a machine that would be willing to come and help us out for the last two months this year?
For the last three months, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, by the time we open the dialogue up and they're already, I think that what I heard managers, as Oski said, was that their schedule's booked. So we may call them and say, we're ready for you to come there and say, too bad, so sad, see you next year. The, the, I'm sorry, I, 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 this is not the sagecoach leaving station. This is the sagecoach almost at detonation. I mean, the, 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 they're a source, I'm concerned. They should have been addressed long before this.
But we can't put it to bed because the streets need to be swept.
Listen, I'm, you want me, I'm weak freak. I keep my little camera over the road very neat. What, what are we going to do? We can't get a company to come in. Let me, I'm not going to buy a machine for two months.
Direct, direct me to talk to Vortech about potentially bringing one of their machines in, um, and see if we can get one of those for the next two seasons. The next two, maybe one, month and a half. We don't have to run it all the schedule. We can run it as best we can and try to get something taken care of and, and go that route.
I hate that. Um, just because, again, I go back to, we have time. We, we need to follow a schedule because cars won't be moved. Um, so unless we have a plan to get people to move their cars, I feel like it's a waste of resources. I know. I, it, I, I'm really trying to make the best of a situation that I think has gone on too wrong. So it, I think that, can we ask them if they would, if they have someone that would be willing, with both companies, see if we could do something with that?
I would raise that to both of them and see if there's something that, that Vortech would be interested in or if, um, Evercore can send somebody up. So.
And should we reach out to them this time?
The only other one that had a machine that would be capable of doing this is, is Camp Hill. And I don't know if, if Camp Hill in the middle of their season would be willing to, to set it up. And, uh, and they got their machine actually from Vortech too. The, the same one that was here Jubilee Day was the one they have.
So I'll, I'll trade this for a friend of mine, which, you know, I hope you consider that, uh, is they are, their job is to defend. Our job is to shoot. So we have to act. Maybe, maybe they're listening. Maybe they wouldn't, but if we don't ask, we won't know.
I can reach out to Camp Hill.
I think unless, unless the council has a different plan, I think we should make a phone call. See if they're willing to come. I agree with Councilman Anderson again, uh, by the way I get to phone. But I think that the streets should be swept on schedule. However, our, our surgery now for this entire season has not seen a single machine out of Jubilee Day. And they're not going to move their cars anyway because they figure that we're not sweeping the street.
So I get, in years past, because there's been years where we haven't had street sweeping, um, our mess law enforcement officers give a little pre-picket. Saying next week leave your car, get towed. And then sometimes they even call you and say.
They can call everybody, isn't she?
We have signs on, in the downtown area and on Simpson Street. So.
A little social media and other means to get the work out.
Yeah, I, I just, I really feel strongly, I know Roger probably will, he's going to be saying this, but if we have time and we have the schedule, we need to stick to it and it's worth it.
I agree with that.
Councilman Anderson also made a good point about it affecting the storm sewers.
Yes.
For which, um, I was made aware that we could possibly put some of the money that we're getting from storm water be towards, towards that.
Yes.
And so we could share the costs. So.
Yep. I'll let this board and the authority board argue what the studies are. I'll just want to.
I don't even have anything to show about it.
You're just going to settle a bill. Right?
President Warren, what is the direction to managers?
I think the direction is to get updated price from, um, Evercore. At the same time, you can reach out to Vortech and get a price for, for the machine for two months or however long you may pass the center.
Are you saying lease the machine?
Yeah.
I mean, we have provided operator.
But when they did Vortech for Jubilee Day, who was the operator? Was it them?
That was them, yeah.
But they were, they were trying to sell the machine.
But that was, we had a, we're going to be raising our tires on this machine, right? Well, there was, there was a weird issue with tire. I think you saw what went into that tire. I think I sent you, did I send you guys the picture?
No, but what?
It was a, it looked like a wheel off of a little cart wheel. And the spike that was on the end of it was like this long. And the brush kicked it just right, shut it up, and he ran right over. I mean, I heard it pop. I was at the fire station. And I heard the tire pop from where I was at. And he was cleaning down by Warner Street. So, um, and I, I was nothing long after that. I got a phone call that his tire was flat. But they went over, they got another machine, brought it over, and they finished up by one flock. So, um. Justin has worked very, very hard to try to make an impression on, on the town. And, I mean, I know it's, he's a salesman, it's his job, but, I mean, and he did, and he did a great job. The machine did a really, really nice job.
We'll go back and see if we can make another impression for the last two months of it.
What I don't offer, they don't have drivers.
He doesn't have driver per se, but we might be able to see something that we could do. So, I'm, I'm the only one that's trained on that machine, so I don't know, I don't want to do that.
And you have to.
I know, and I'm just saying.
Well, I do, we, we had talked about doing that in the.
If we had somebody, I could train them on how to run this machine.
You're telling them about.
No, you do enough with the brim and stuff out there on your, your, your inlet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what I can get, uh, if you want, what I can do, we're going to ask for a new quote for the last two months on the full season from the contractor. And we're going to reach out to Camp Hill.
Yep.
That's great.
Got it written down.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Discussion on renovation, possible access or purchase of traffic speed control devices for the police department. Chief Myers, can you provide some update or recommendations perhaps?
We have a, I'm sorry about, a real close, you know, the, um, speed signs we're looking at cost. Uh, it comes with a lot of other things that we figure in. See, not only the package, the actual quote for the one set, uh, portable, same as the scene around, exactly the same as the stories. It was a little short there, but it's like, the cost is, it's a bit more. The other thing that you have in here is the Enrad system, that's a, a system that's not, it can be operated by one person. But people have found out that if they leave a part of it, it's behind, it sometimes disappears. So, um, this, this thing is a non-radar, uh, electronic device that would increase speed. Perfect. And the guy suggested that we take a look at that too. And the only one I found was the, some refurb one, so you've got a little idea about what it might cost. So we would be looking for, for sure, the speed signs and possibly the Enrad. I have one battery, so we can get the rest of them drained out very quick.
So with that, what's, what sort of the bottom line estimated cost?
Oh, I did not bring the one, it has the actual pump on it down here, if I did, I can't find it. I screwed it. The cost would be rounding up. About nineteen thousand dollars.
This includes the USB device?
Two, which includes two of the, the portable USB designs that we can drive around places. And then also the, the timing device that would, um, actually can be used for enforcement.
So those two things would help with traffic calming and with enforcement?
Yes.
And we deal with that issue and the other issues that we have.
From what I understand, I've never used one, but from what I understand, it can be set up, the Enrad can be set up just about anywhere. So that would be another helpful thing, is we don't, we don't really have the ability to do speed on some of the streets because there's, we just have lines out there, and that's the kind of way we do speed now. So this would be a different way of doing it to one guy. One guy could do it, um, but they also told me sometimes things disappear somewhere. We'll have to see what happens with that, but it certainly is something that at least one of my guys has a lot of experience with, he certified, so we'll have to get the rest on.
Do we have a history of using a speed enforcement device in the ground?
Uh, a, uh, we used to use, um, a device that we set out on the road. A long time down, and mostly now they use stopwatch and lines, so.
I'm just looking to, probably a super question, but what was it that was broken there?
Well, yeah, someone didn't, didn't get back to me, and that is actually the traffic counter. And he puts the, um, out on the street, I assume, the newer one, it has two hoses, um, be easier to set up. But that one would also give us a count of cars and trucks and.
So that's a double hose?
Double hose.
That, that speed as well as counting?
It counts mostly.
Okay.
But it will average the speeds.
So it's not an enforcement tool?
No. It's a, I mean, cars are going down the street, I mean, trucks are going down the street.
Analytical tool?
Approximately how fast is a medium speed?
Look, it'd be a analytical tool for an argument for the trucks and.
Yes, yeah, unfortunately, he didn't give me any numbers, and I, he specifically knows which company he was working with.
So we'll have to hold off on that one?
For that, we'll see, yes.
Okay.
And I'll sit on it for that number for that phone.
So the Enrad rod, right, on the figure, so you could put it on those areas that people are setting high speeds where we couldn't necessarily look for the car and catch them. Like, they would have that, and then they could set up a.
Yep.
Driver check. Okay. And the accuracy, do you have to, like, how often do you have to?
You know, I don't know, it probably has to be calibrated, just like the stopwatches do every sixty days, but I don't know that one.
And that would be a really good social media thing to talk about because no one likes paying it too dead.
Right.
I'm already slowing down right now.
Fair enough.
So you add that, the enforcement, the signs course are informational.
Signs are informational, of course, they, they can put another message on there too. So like, if, if there was a, an accident ahead, we could put accident ahead on there, um, using, I don't think we, I don't know how much we can write, but. We can also, it can say a different message, it doesn't have to say, um, just a speed, it can say.
Have a great day.
Anything we want, have a nice day.
What's the advocacy of, are there any metrics on advocacy of the informational signage in terms of affecting driver behavior over time?
I actually did read an article about that. And said that they, um, a particular smaller town did a study and found out that, uh, these informational signs do work. It was slowing people down. Um, and if you got the informational signs up and then you put an enforcement component with it, it's going to work.
If you drag down fifteen towards Camp Hill, they have those out?
Yeah.
And everyone's, right, like, come on, it's easy, and it doesn't matter what time of the day that people walk out.
If it stays for six weeks, so remember that the portable, it's a good idea.
Do we have a motion? For the chief to exceed the, acquire?
I'll make that motion.
For the devices?
The Enrad and the.
Information.
Information.
Chief, can you repeat the cost for the motion?
I didn't add it up particularly, but the one, eleven thousand, six hundred. And the other, the refurb I looked at is, it can be anywhere about three thousand dollars, yes, and that's a refurb. I don't know anything about the, that's all I can find.
Can I help you on certain amounts?
Stop that twenty thousand.
If, if I may add to that motion also to pull that money out of the Police Capital Improvement Fund. Line item zero one four ten seven forty, chief has forty-two thousand dollars in that fund. That way it's not going to impact her operating budget. Chief, you and I didn't talk about that, but it's something that I think, uh, after looking at what I printed out today, that might be the best place to go with that.
Would you share, can we share that cost with the, the money from the, the?
We're going to, we're going to do the ARP funds too, yes, yes. So the, the government expenditure plan, yes, we could definitely use that.
How it's like a fifty-fifty split, like, uh, is it like a break?
The government expenditure plan is fifty percent. Oh, line it, I'm sorry.
I was just an idea, I don't know.
Oh, one four ten seven four, that's what I'm going to be able to count.
I'll, I'll allow that to my motion.
Did you get, oh, one four ten seven four, all right.
The matching plan, wow.
So whatever, whatever the final cost is, we'll match it out of the.
ARP.
Okay. Fifty percent out of the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we do second, we can second? Councilman O'Neill, seconds, any further discussion?
So just to be clear, that's two of the signs, the portable signs. Did, I was looking at that document, do, if a document in here that had, uh, what was included in that? I've seen the quote.
Yes, that's what's included with this.
So it's eleven thousand and change.
Yes.
And then you're talking about, um, the Enrad system, the information you provided to us, says basically twenty-nine ninety-five, thirty-four ninety-five.
Yes.
So I'm just curious, not to be contentious, I'm sorry, why are we pointing at twenty?
That's because these are just quotes, I, I don't want to limit her ability to get this based off of a thousand or so dollars if it goes up above it.
And you and that may also, the, the refurb, the one that I can find, the refurb.
Oh, the authorized new or refurbished? Oh, we're going to use that for the chief. And then these will be put into service, we haven't discussed that, I mean, are we thinking they'll be put into service right away, or?
From what I understand from the person I spoke to, um, the portable speed signs will definitely be coming, they'll come right away.
And we know we have our class in the area.
Are you, are you thinking of, William, hold on, I'm overstepping, I have a little bit, are you thinking of putting into effect some speed enforcement? When these signs come in, they're functional, or this equipment considered as functional?
If.
You're assuming the sign that I'm not sure about.
If we can, um, if we have like lines, put the speed lines up. I also would like to see maybe some, uh, speed enforced signs along some of the, the roadways that we can travel. So that, if we, even if we're not there, people might think we are. So, but it, it does, it does, there is anecdotal evidence that these signs are vulnerable, slow people down. So if I can't get a, an Enrad device right away, um, like I can get these signs, then we can put these out. And once the Enrad is available, we can do enforcement.
I'm fine with supporting this tonight, but in the future, I'd like to see more metrics on advocacy in, in order to be able to make sound financials. And that's just kind of, I understand anecdotal evidence, but it'd be interesting to see how long they're effective, to what extent they're effective. And I'm sure that data is out there somewhere, probably not the easiest thing to come by, but the company might have it, you know, in part of their sales efforts.
We're going to take it as a factor.
Well, of course, but we might achieve some metrics attached to it. Because we're basically saying we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars in taxpayers' money, and we're going to hope that this works, and it's going to work.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's found in the user, there must be some. There's some truth to that, but they.
My mom always used to say, everybody jumps off the bridge.
Yes.
Right, so metrics will be nice for you, and for me, that's just a personal thing.
Well, I think we need to get the tools, I mean, when you talk about town and being locked in, it's very difficult to manage traffic speed when you can't have law enforcement setting up speed traps like you couldn't in other areas. So I, I'm just happy that we are discussing and moving forward with something. Because I think when we sit back and don't do anything, it actually costs us a lot more, so. It, it, I, it's nice to have the data, but I think for me, I'm okay moving forward with this. And this particular issue.
I agree.
I agree, I think that our taxpayers are wanting action from us. And this needs to be responsible action in that it's huge elsewhere, it's been effective in other places. And, I don't know, like, how many more actions could there be at that intersection before we get the appropriate metrics?
Well, I hope not that many, I hope we'll be able to gather metrics much more efficiently than that. So, and I'm, I'm supportive of it in the future, but I'd like to see, um, for money on the problem, I'd like to know what kind of result we're going to get based on data.
I think it's a reason, I think it's reasonable to request that. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Much in passing, Steve?
Thank you.
Your opposition?
You want to hear?
All right, thank you, Councilman O'Neill, you're going to want to help me across the recommendation, Councilman Martin.
Okay, let me find my, here we go. So you want to know the page, oh, this is the page, okay. Um, update on the repair of the line at the pool. And update on the tread.
They're working, they started working, getting the stuff applied today, hopefully we get it done before the storms hit, this later as we.
How long does it take for, how long are they going to be driving it?
Ideally, a day and a half, two days is what they're saying, but we're pushing it, trying to get it done.
And is it painted?
It's painted, like, yes, they're going to apply it that way, um, with a, uh, friction.
With grit in it?
Grift that's put into it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. How do you know if it was painted, or if you were like, had to use an epoxy and put like a, a pad on it?
The problem with it is, is it's painted with fiberglass, and it's untreated fiberglass, so, um, that's where the problem is coming in, it's not soaking in as well as what it should, so. Um, I didn't talk to CH today to see how it went, but they started those this morning as soon as, soon as the threat of thunderstorms went away.
Okay. Sue was there. Sue was saying it was about the thunderstorms, yeah.
Yeah, well, she's, she's, she's never about thunderstorms all the time.
She's a professional.
In her position, I can understand that. Councilman Mark, I'm sorry, forgot, uh, there was an action to offer enforcement to lifeguards and clerks at an hourly rate, uh, that was added to the agenda.
Yes.
Yesterday afternoon, when I got the information.
Yes, that's right.
Sorry about that, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right, that's all right, no, I'm glad that you brought that up because I don't have it here in front of me.
You want me to read it off?
Yeah, please.
All right. Action, action to offer enforcement to lifeguards and clerks at an hourly rate and position as outlined in the Amendment dated six twenty-one twenty-two for manager Sazursky. There were six, six lif, six personnel added, I think, I don't have the memo with me, that I printed out and bring with me.
I think there were like four and two.
Yeah, there were six, oh, yeah.
Two at the front desk and four guards, I believe? Yeah. Anyway, um, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion from Councilman Martin, do you have a second?
I'll drag him.
I have it to the second, any discussion?
Is this going to help keep the pool open for the hour set, or are we still having the holidays with?
I have talked to Sue about what happened over the weekend, I know Saturday was cold, so she didn't open until four o'clock. Um, and she sent us the notice on Sunday, or about Sunday, Friday. So, and I had, like I said, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sue about it, but I'm going to, I'm going to try to make arrangements to get out there tomorrow to talk to her.
I wasn't talking about the holiday related, weather related, or just staffing?
Well, maybe, all the kids being out of school.
Okay, discussion on action on the hiring of water watchers for the municipal swimming pool. So, um, I was tasked to, what?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't vote on that yet?
No, you made the motion, second, did it?
Does Miss Mary second, on favor?
All right.
On opposed?
Okay, is it my turn again? Okay. Discussion on action on the hiring of water watchers for the municipal swimming pool. So I was tasked with, um, going to, uh, asking the, the rec board about water watchers, um, their role, when they would be used, if there would be any, um, metrics used as to when they would be called. So, um, I asked the question, um, the, uh. So, um, I asked the questions, um, the, and here are, here are the answers. Uh, water watchers would be adult, not routinely scheduled, but on an on-call as needed basis for times when the pool is fairly crowded, um, perhaps on weekends or extra hot days, or when the adventure campers are swimming. Um, it would not be a place of a lifeguard in any way, shape, or form. It would just simply be an additional set of eyes in whatever is the busiest area of the pool. So if a busy crowd is in the Olympic pool, then the guard would be stationed at the Olympic pool as they normally are, and then there would also be a water watcher. Um, they would probably have, they would, they would be wearing like a, a yellow safety vest so that the lifeguard could see them well. And their job is to notify a lifeguard if they see anything that the lifeguard maybe did not notice. All right, so the lifeguard's looking over here, and they start to scan around, and they see the water watcher doing this, and they know there's an issue. And the water watcher would not have a whistle. Um, they wouldn't have a flotation device that they could throw out to somebody if they needed it. Um, and, that's it? Any other questions?
Yeah, what training?
Oh, yeah, there would be training, um, Tub would, would supply the training.
Is it, are we using the National Water Watchers program?
No, I don't think there's any specific training on a national basis for water watchers.
So would be, it would be based on availability of the water watchers, which, how many do we have identified?
No, it wouldn't, it would be, they would just be on call. I think there's like four or five identified.
Okay.
So they would just be on call. So Sue could call, um, I think Lori and Weber's one of them, Sue could call Lori and say, hey, could you come down to the pool for a couple hours? It's really crazy right now, we just wanted to set a high.
And so I have a, this, I'm not sold on the program, I have to hear why. Um, I'm gonna support Bob in this, in the metric. So if we have a day where we think it's severe or something, we just randomly call some month to come, we have a budget in, um, they're not acting as lifeguards. Like I, I just, like I, I'm a little confused by this, if we don't have a shortage of lifeguards, because I thought that's kind of what we were trying to do, make sure that staffing wasn't for a while.
I think that they were, I, I don't.
Well, as the list was given, two of them or three of them were already life guards.
Yeah.
Those two were for clerks.
So I, I.
It's a penalty.
Yeah, it seems, it's like, I, I just don't, like, the staffing model confuses me. And so if we're relying on people's availability, it, they, there's no guarantee that a water watcher will be available. And so therefore, like, my concern is, is that we're using a water watcher program for high volume times, but we don't have staff for it, it, it's kind of like gambling?
No, someone's gotta be there, there would be staff.
No, it's, but what you said is that high volume times, they would call these on-call people that may or may not be available. So it's not a guarantee that we would have a water watcher come and support it.
Yeah, but they would be called in because a lifeguard didn't show up.
Is it an extra measure of safety?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess, I just don't like, to me, if we're staffing for lifeguards and you don't have a guarantee that a water watcher's coming in, it's kind of like, I, I'm not quite sure how we staff it dependently. Like, if one weekend we have five hundred patrons, round numbers, and the next weekend we have five hundred patrons, and one weekend we call in and one of our water watchers can come in, but the next weekend they can't come in, with the benefit of the staffing model. Because we always wanna staff, right, for the same scenarios. That's just nice, but if they're not scheduled, like, I would look at maybe a high volume time that we would use water watchers to make sure that they're available if we need that extra safety precautions, not just a possibility. Does that make sense?
It does, but I don't think that they, they can't predict when it's gonna be, when the water is gonna be in the pool.
Yeah, and then they can't predict their availability either for water watchers. So that's kind of like, I guess the premise of it, I just am not convinced.
It doesn't necessarily work out the way that they would, they want it to work out, because they're gonna call, so they're gonna call Lori and Weber anyway, who's also a trained lifeguard, so just bring her on the water.
And there was a question, she's calling a water watcher, and someone's in trouble, and she does not.
She would have to rest.
She would have to do a rest.
Sure, there's like, there's a lifeguard on it.
And, and the, the staffing levels of the pool, yes, you, you wanna staff to the amount of people in there, but lifeguard requirements are based on the water surface there. It's not based on the amount of people that are in the pool. You do want more eyes on it, but the fact of the matter is, the, the safety requirements are based on four thousand, one, one lifeguard for four thousand square feet of water.
So it's not based on square.
It's never based on.
Okay. No lifeguard, no.
I'm not sure, yeah. One of the things we understand here from the insurance group, that's not, clear about it. But at the same time, I think they misunderstand that it was placing a lifeguard.
Right, yeah.
It's just additional eyes on, on the water.
That's all an aggregate, no. Warren, almost got it right. Uh, it's just hiring, are we paying them?
Yes, when they're actively working, yes.
Can this program be volunteered, can be volunteered?
No.
No, no?
And that'd be costly, what was caused?
Me, yeah, right. The insurance company would really have it. We've already had an issue where there's, where people wanna volunteer lifeguards, and the insurance company has shut them down. They need to be, they need to be on the payroll.
Yeah, I just, I, like, for me, I would like to see it, like, for high volume times that they schedule, and, and so I know that you can't always predict it, but I just, the, the on-call system makes me feel like we're setting up a, a false sense of security, and I also do believe that if we're gonna have water watchers for a lifeguard, they should be lifeguards, maybe, I, I mean. And how many of them sit on the, how many water watchers currently sit on the volunteer board? Two of them, okay. And it hasn't been the rest, our employees at the pool right now, or not?
There were two other clerks, so two clerks and three lifeguards, I think, or two lifeguards and.
I'd have to look back to find those.
Yeah, it was a little mixture of white people, other lifeguards, and clerks, and tough.
School district employees and manager, and a lot of managers, the assistant manager at the pool. I'm surprised about the insurance company not being more supportive, and if they're not more supportive, then is there a reason for that?
The reason for that is most of the, most of the information you find out online about water watchers doesn't address municipal and public pools. It's addressed towards more of the, um, private individual pools, particularly with the, the, the new renting of your backyard home to different people. Um, it's more for when you have, you have a group of kids from the neighborhood come over, you have a designated parent that's out there being a water watcher. The rest of the moms can be sitting around, you know, with their bonbons and their rosé, but, um, for the most part. But they, they don't address, they don't address this to public municipal pools.
How, how many incidents have we had in the last five years that we believe a water watcher would have made the outcome better?
That's hard to predict, because last year was a high rescue season, and I think.
Last year they had like over fifty saves.
And I think that's why the discussion originally came up, was that they were hoping to have, and try to make that wrong, they were hoping to have the folks kind of see if there was an unsafe situation going on in the pool, or following people that they thought were at risk of drowning.
So when I was at the rec board meeting, one of the things that was discussed with regard to this was that, was, and correctly, like, may I have this wrong? They started the swim testing in response to the high number of saves, correct?
For daycare.
Yeah, for daycares, but they've always done.
They've always done that.
For daycares, that's not new.
So we have, some of our younger candidates, they have to pass a test before they're allowed in the pool.
Because they can offer to children or their parents to do the swim test with people that they think may be at risk. But if you act, it's a good idea, because they do. A lot of people can use them without a sliding board, and it's not a big deal, because it's shallow, and they're coming down, and they're drowning from that. Right, so how many of, of the saves last year were related to the sliding board?
Uh, more than half.
Yeah, I remember.
And the other thing, next to that, were the other zips?
Yeah, not so much those, um, it's the, it's the slides, um, most slides, places, our slide had a little bit deeper water at the bottom of it, so it, it caused confusion, but the only requirement at that point in time when you go to get on the slide is, it'd be forty inches thick. Forty eight inches thick.
They're wearing bands now.
Uh.
Only daycare kids are wearing bands, unless.
The daycare kids, that's, that is new, although they're, it's not the zips that are requiring bands.
They're requiring a swim, that's kind of a ban.
They told, um, I visited, they had said something about that they're doing swim tests for the.
They're requiring it, yeah. It's not voluntary, it's not daycare.
That's a new policy.
I.
And we'd have to check our rules system too, because that is not on the rules.
No, that's.
So it's not enforceable unless we amend it.
Right, so, so in practice, because I too went and visited, they're, they're requiring the bands, and the bands are permanent style banned, you have to cut off. And if they, if you do not have a band, it means you have not taken the mandatory test, passed it. If you haven't done that, you're not allowed to use those items, which really has been a huge problem, because sliding was.
So it's a good problem.
Which, right, we're good there, so.
But, but what I'm saying is that we adopt pool rules every year. So if, if that is, if they can't enforce that, um, I like that. I think that's a great idea, that we have a safety swim test. But I, I know one of the things that we had talked about in the past was that, what if a parent says no to it? And there's not much we can do at that point.
So I didn't really bring that up as a debate about that policy, because that's not what I was going with it. But they're requiring that, and so I'm wondering, how many shows were there in previous years? There were fifty saves last year, how many saves the year before, the year before that?
Before the year before, but there was not.
Before that, there were like, maybe two handfuls. Like, it, it was a significant jump.
A ten, ten.
Maybe, maybe.
But also, I spent in the attendance of the pool, so we had a lot of people that were not locals in Mechanicsburg last year, because there was lots of pools, maybe urban areas that were closed. Not everyone had come in with the ability to swim. We also had a language barrier that took place, so rules were not published in Spanish last year. They are posted now, correct, in Spanish. So, um, hoping that that also will, um, for the diving, shallow diving, when people like to do that, um, but that's against the rules, and holding your breath for a long period of time. Those things were not always, um, translated for people. So I think that we had a huge amount of non-Mechanicsburg people coming here, and a huge amount of non-swimmers, that is a very affordable option for people to do, um, especially in this economy. Our pool pri- prices are really good. Um, yes, none, you don't think they're good, I think they're great prices. Um, so I think that that, those, it was like a, a huge bottle of everything that created those, those saves last year, but it was a huge amount.
What's the rate of save this year?
I don't know, maybe there have been a little far.
I'm already just correcting.
It's gonna be a while till we know either.
When do we know the number of saves a date? We could scapulate.
Sliding doesn't open yet.
Yeah.
Right. And that certainly would affect it.
Mm-hmm. So you think that's a solution?
Over this line.
That's close, I'm gonna like that.
So I have a lifeguard for six years. A lifeguard at Carlisle Community Pool, at Carlisle Line A Pool, at the Feld Bonjourno Conference Center, and also at Miller's University Pool, uh, which is seventy-five-year-old black swimmers, and that was it. Um, I had never heard of this program before, before I deployed it, and it was a bad cross call, since I was my teenage years. Uh, but I don't understand the reasoning behind having people who are trained lifeguards be water watchers. If they're training it, or do they wanna watch the water, then they should be lifeguards for the, for Mechanicsburg and work with it. Um, I think that this is, I understand the, the goal here of adding to the safety, but I think that it would cause a lot of confusion for lifeguards, because in this pressure situation where somebody may or may not be drowning, they're processing so much at the age, they're, they're probably looking at the water, not even looking at the person who's waving their arms and jumping frantically. Uh, so I think that this adds probably a level of confusion that they don't need in that time, when they're trying to figure out if a save is necessary. Because you, you think about any other pressure situation, um, it's not the level of what the police deal with, with, with somebody who's ever done. Well, at the same time, it, it's a pretty intense situation trying to figure out if you need to save somebody's life. So I, I understand the goal of this, but I don't understand the responsibility.
It, and my confusion, again, the said is, that we're calling it a program that is a program, but not using the programming to train people. So I think for me, if we were going to adopt a water watchers program in the future, we should use the curriculum to train people, but I do believe that that could be a problem with, with lots of confusion.
I agree with that. And that, with the, the roster of people suggested, this doesn't seem like it's worth the effort to try to implement this for the benefit it would bring versus the detract, versus the possibility of causing us some liability issues and, and for also the reasons, you know, see, I don't mention, but, um, how does the rest of council feel?
I'd like to see more lifeguards rather than water watchers, and I, I appreciate the comment that you shared, that was very helpful. I certainly want to see more be safe, as a scuba diver, I'm all about safety, uh, and it's very important. But I knew she parts of the pool closed the day that I was there, because we did not have enough guards. And I saw guards that, uh, so we're definitely trying to get them to take their breaks, but it was difficult, because there was, there were no extra people there, and they were a farm issue.
I think that's a good point, too, we wouldn't want, and we could not, open up those extra areas, because we wouldn't have the lifeguards, it would just, that this program wouldn't help that, so.
There was an article today, um, and I'm not sure which, which, um, outlet it was, but it was grandmothers volunteering to lifeguards, or going back to lifeguarding, and then you're not volunteering. Um, so they're studying to recruit older folks, so I, I thought that was, you know, an interesting spin, to see if we could find any older lifeguards that would wanna return to the water.
And we've solicited that too, but they committed by the past, you know, because they ask questions. Is this gonna, you know, are they gonna be able to latch, or are they gonna be able to do this? You know, but we're looking for people to work the pool, so.
Well, and it's, and it's promising that we were able to extend offers for six more staff. That's a good thing.
I, we're like, I'm sorry.
Does it ask Councilor O'Neill what he had, in terms of, of the direction?
Well, I agree with the, having, uh, uh, a random lifeguard and additional lifeguards over what I've heard so far about the water watch program. I mean, again, I agree, the goal is admirable, safety is our goal, but if we can do it with lifeguards, then let's do it with lifeguards, at least for this season. If you have this program developed, so we get more understanding of that, but people in the middle of the season.
Councilor Martin, what are your final thoughts on this?
I don't know, it's fine.
She's correct, the fourth level, and so that's back in the pool, or really, I'm keeping the channel clear.
So we end on here, possible action, uh, do we wanna take action? Do we want to entertain a motion for, for denying this, or do we want to just entertain a motion to table?
Let's just get rid of it, I'm tired of talking about it.
Okay.
That's my motion, I'll second that motion.
Not too much to, 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 to not, not pursue with the hearing of the water watcher.
Yes.
And we have a second for Councilor Aggersing. Any further discussion, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Discussion and positive, sorry.
Discussion on action to purchase walkie-talkies for the municipal swimming pool, intention three. They are necessarily walkie-talkies, the ones that they have are not working, they are, they have, um.
They're three years old.
Yeah, they have.
Two more people in play.
Yeah. They have reviewed back to semaphore, you know, that they use on the beach, so.
So we need to get them flagged.
Yeah, they need flagged, so anyway, uh, she can look into purchasing new walkie-talkies. Um, she sent a quote over for Repevis R T forty-eight waterproof walkie-talkies with long-range, six-way, multi-unit charger, two-way radio for construction, with five ear, earpieces. Um, the total would be three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, she says these are the, these are inexpensive, and will get us through three to four seasons. They had good reviews and a good number of aquatic. and a good number of aquatic directors have recommended them.
I make a motion to accept the suggestion of the author, he said sure funds those terms.
We have a motion from Councilman O'Neal, would you have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Martin seconds, any further discussion?
At the risk of the line being lifted. One way, uh, four months ago, the school district, having regular purchase programs for the school access to the school police and the athletics, had we, had we considered that doing now, or is it even worth that at this point?
For three months out of the year, and the, the risk of these getting clipped on to swimming trunks and going in the water.
Okay.
Um, I mean, the, the reason.
These are, these are fully waterproof for thirty minutes.
Okay. Then I have no further comment requested.
Thank you.
So maybe, we're out of the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed.
I don't know why my agenda keeps disappearing. With the computer, okay. Um, discussion of action toward the contract for the feasibility study for the municipal swimming pool. What do you have for us?
Uh, you saw, uh, uh, I sent out last week with all the bidding numbers in there and the, the spreadsheet as far as grading, um, what the contract, what they provided, so on and so forth, there were, um, they're very good proposals that came through, um, I think all of them kinda captured the majority of what it was, uh, Greg went over, Greg had no comments. He said they all look very good, uh, it's up to what we, what we wanna do with the, who we're gonna go to. Um, I did, my matrix, I've announced right away, everyone, uh, the one that came out on top as far as mine goes with a score of two hundred and one was Aquatic Facility Designs Incorporated, uh, from Millerford, Pennsylvania. That was a big factor in that, they were local, they were here, uh, they, they would be here. Water's Edge from Kansas is one of the two hampton townships, so they do have some information as far as demographics go, um, but they're in Kansas, they would not be on site as much as what one of the local ones was, the other company, the Councilman Hunsicker, um, their closest office is St. Louis, Missouri, so that, again, they'd be travel time. I think the cost showed some of that, uh, that was in there. One of the other things that I liked about Aquatic Facility Design was they gave us two already bids, one for some actual physical testing at the, at the pool. As far as the concrete goes, they do realize that some of the concrete at the pool is fixed nineteen fifty-five vintage, so, um, it may need to be replaced, it may need to be looked at, so they can give us a total idea of what we're looking at. Uh, their price was to me, the road price to begin with, uh, until you add on the two alternates, they come in the mid, mid-range. So, um, that's who I feel would provide us with the best idea there, uh, or the best feasibility study going forward. Uh, they did send people down to look at the pool in prior to submitting the bid, also, um, the other company didn't, and the one company from Kansas did a phone interview with me to, uh, to, to base their, their proposal, so that is, that's my recommendation, uh, does anybody have any questions, one with the reviews?
I don't have any questions, I'm, I like the idea of using a local company rather than a company that's further away, I'm gonna have to be on site.
Did the gentleman here, he didn't have any further comments on, on?
Uh, he reviewed the, the proposal before I sent it out, he, I sent him everything that, that we had coming back, and, um, he said everything looks really good, there's no, nothing that really stood out.
And they've worked with, um?
They've worked, yes, they've worked with Aquatic Facility Designs before, uh, I think Justin Medeski's HRG firm has also.
Anything else? We may have a motion?
To award, and would, if the motion would please include the, uh, the additional, um.
I would, I would read it, you weren't gonna read it off?
Yep.
Okay, it would be to award the contract for the feasibility study for the municipal pool, to Aquatic Facility Design Incorporated, uh, Millerford, Pennsylvania, for a total of one, of forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, that includes the alternates.
They have a motion.
I made that motion.
Councilman Martin, make a submission, is there a second?
Okay.
Councilman Aggersing seconds, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed.
Okay, so let me just go over what, um, we talked about at the rec board meeting while I was there, um, I passed along to them the comment from a concerned citizen about the, the skate that Koger parking in, um, also we talked about, um, Upper Round McKenneyburg baseball contacting Councilman O'Neal about the design of the fence, and that is in need, is in need of repair, um. The board feels that the park is beyond the scope of volunteers, it needs more than just mulch and weed, leading, um. I have been waiting for a list from one of the board members of the items that she believes need to be completed at the park. Um, I was hoping I could get that before this meeting, but she did not get it to me, um, and also I think Roger was gonna make a list, and we were gonna try to compare the list to see, you know, what all needs to be done, um, with the blessing of council and the rec board, I was considering maybe, um, approaching Upper Round commissioners to see if they would like to help us out, collaborate in some way, as this park or the Upper Round and McKenneyburg, the Upper Round McKenneyburg baseball people use the park, um, so maybe we can combine resources and try to get it in better shape. Um, the rec board seems a little hesitant that we would lose our park, I'm not quite sure how that would happen, um, but, so, uh, does anybody on council have any problem with the approaching of?
I mean, if, if council, if council feels that's a, a perfect way to go, I'm happy to assist Councilman Martin in approaching that, as well as, personally, so.
Well, I have my discussions with the Upper Round and, you know, the baseball association, specifically the fence, they identified a possibility, no commitment monetarily, but to approach them, to have the discussion, potentially contribute, that leads to the fence or maybe some other things related to, I'm sure just the baseball, you know, not the whole park, so that's another place to formally open discussions.
So with, with the commissioners and with the baseball.
Right.
And I think that would be a goodwill, I mean, I think we're, we're working with the U A, McKenneyburg baseball, better, and their communication has been better, um, so I, I would like to, to offer that for each, um, too.
Are you talking about monetary contribution, labor contribution, any contribution?
Any, any kind of collaboration that we can get.
I think it's great, I just wanna make sure all the stakeholders are at the table together and, you know, right, people are having that conversation.
Comments from the manager, or that idea?
It, it was floated probably two years ago, um, by a commissioner from Upper Round, and rec shot it down then, um, along with the council at that time, and turned it down, um. The other option that we have, um, and I, and that's not something that Scott Fraser and I discussed whenever him and I met, um, and it's not something that was discussed at, at the, um, at the, the, uh, the joint rec meeting last two weeks ago, so, um, which is, Tony usually brings stuff like that up when she's looking for collaboration, and there was a commissioner there from the township along with the assistant township manager, so, um. It's council's call, I mean, on this one, this is, this is up to you guys, how you wanna proceed with this, um, I did the, the municipal services group that we were talking to, um, and this is something that C H and I talked about, because of the parks and the condition that they're in, and as far as behind, and the fact that we have no mulch, um, he, he's a little concerned of trying to play catch-up now, especially now that summer adventure camps in, in the main park, um, and Koger has the, uh, the daycare center, the, the children's daycare is over there, um, getting his guys over there to work, they don't, uh, it doesn't get, a little kid mixed in with us moving equipment around, doesn't work well. So, uh, I think that's something that, that if Upper Round does come in on the table, they need to be aware that there's gonna be children over there, they're not gonna be able to work during work hours.
I think Upper Round probably knows that children are gonna be on parks, they have parks of their own, I think that, we've told this over and over, we don't want to ignore your words, that your crew is drastically overgrown, and that you are having difficulty getting the slide open from month over month, and you're having difficulty getting, uh, the painted crosswalk, we talked about that, Councilman O'Neal asked about that last meeting, I think all of them, I don't think he's. So, I don't think it hurts anything for a group of people that have interest to sit down and discuss what they might be able to collaboratively, um, but I think our friends and neighbors in Upper Round are pretty knowledgeable folks, I think they might be able to bring some real good information to the table and, and create alternatives.
If, if the public's in my brain, I believe that Upper Round had to totally remove the park from us, am, am I making that up?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that was not, reaching was not a, an option, they were, they were, they were coming in to.
The, 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 the reason that the rec committee, that they thought there would be a hostile takeover, there was, that was a reason behind it, like, I felt like.
You can't without somebody in one of the council, the commissioners, but, um, and where he lives, but the, uh, and there was, there was discussion of reversibles on that one too, so, um. That's the one thing, I mean, we, there is, if that, if we're gonna give that rep, there is the opportunity, um, that I think that Evercore and there's companies out there that we can prompt, maybe have a contract with, that would come in and do everything we want done at the parks, and give our guys a head start so that they're gonna maintain it and not coming from behind, so it's just matters of anger.
Do you have a next?
I'm talking about potentially this season, if we could get them in here.
Do we face any contract issues with that with the union?
That guy just left, um, I would, I would, I would have to approach him, because there is, there is the situation there that we, because, and we didn't run into it when we, when we, um, let, let out the mowing. Because they hated that, so they, they didn't wanna do that to begin with, so they were fine with that, but if we do too much, there is a chance we run the risk of having a grievance.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it hurt anything to start a conversation to see if there's any some interest?
No, I, if they're interested, and I would get a lot of good details and go from there, yeah.
Did it give you some direction?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, um, all the parks are in need of mulch, but, we, I'm not, correct, there is no mulch.
Our friends, our, our other friends across, um, to the north of us, uh.
This friend took all the mulch and put it in their park, and now we have no mulch.
Thank you for saying that.
Wow.
And they're going to take some of the stuff that's just been ground, probably half the pile of brown stuff out there, they're gonna take it.
Could we just ask them politely to leave us?
They're, they're, how do we ask them? Well, I was just gonna, how do we, it's a joint, it's a, we told them no, um, they came in with dump trucks and loaders and put it on the, it's a, it's a joint compost site, um. This is, it, May twenty-fifth.
You wanna go and shuffle to their parks and take it back? Try that?
It is dead anyway.
So, um, is there, is there any possibility, I know this is farfetched, that we could purchase mulch for us?
Why don't, why don't we charge some of the spread for the mulch?
It's a joint, it's a joint compost site, it's a very sorry.
But, I'm just very sorry, because they took all of the mulch, and didn't leave us any, so.
I, I think we need to address that initially.
Address that with stuff.
Absolutely, we do have that agenda, I think it's a, it's a, there's a lot of conversation, um, Bard, Ash Bard was at East Pen throw when they made the comment that, yes, they're coming in to get another two hundred and eighty-five cubic yards of, of mulch, um, and the stuff that was just brown, they took, I mean, it's not season, and they.
They're all in for mulch, and there isn't a difference in mulch.
There's no mulch, why not, that's gonna come from my rabbit cage.
So we, we have an issue about that, do you?
Yeah, we do, but in the meantime, is there any way between the mulch and the park?
Well, we could, do that.
I don't know how expensive it is.
I moved, I was gonna say, we did, we got off, we got off their hands, but they already moved it.
I, I don't know about this issue, is an alternative to mulch, mulch, what is mulch's purpose, is it a safety issue, is it a health issue?
So, so it's safety, it, it, it helps push, cushion landing, it also is, I mean, when it rains, there's, there's mud under everything.
Right.
Um, there is, there is alternatives to mulch, I don't know the, the extent of it, um, there was a company called Fibar that uses manufactured wood products, like fake wood, fake mulch, um, that is used, that's specifically used for playgrounds, um, but I would have to find out the price of such things if there's any interest in that.
Do we have any budget money that we could apply to purchase mulch, supposedly at a reasonable rate for one of our local, but, but.
I'd like to have.
Reverse call.
And the modern council right now, so we have a new business, uh, keep it in town or just outside of town.
What about the?
Father's wife.
Oh, yeah, that guy.
Yeah, maybe we'll, uh, cooperate with. Agent N is on, uh, on worst, or not worst, um, Winter Grove too, oh, part, 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 part.
Is this something that the record can look at and come back to us and, and give us some directions for it, or anything they like to do?
Absolutely.
Because quite honestly, this is very frustrating right now.
I mean, it's, it's thousands of dollars.
Not only that, but it was completely, so, I think, I refer one light to move past this topic for tonight, and see if the record has any idea what they want to do.
I think, yeah, and, and I could tell, like, once that list gets compiled together, like it's all squared, the mulch is most, yeah.
And Roger, could you tell them how much cubic feet of mulch they would need?
Oh, yeah, we have that record, they have, C H has those records of what they use before.
Yes, we definitely.
Yeah.
Fibar, S, S I B, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
They presumably said they wanted that during their.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It would be expensive, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We had lots of parks in, for example, if we could just get mulch, that'd be, that'd be something.
I know that dirt is a, is a problem, because when it gets wet, it gets black.
Yeah.
But, that's a, that Fibar is, they used it one year, the stuff barely lasted a couple months, and it was extremely expensive to try to replace it, so.
Well, it's not recycled tire, or top tires, I don't think that used to be a thing.
You gotta be careful with that because they don't always get all the wire, all the steel belts out of it, um, and kids can get injured on that.
There's also a lot of discussion about that being cancerous.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said that, yeah, that's why I said that. Okay, um, additionally, the pool fundraising committee met, um, they are looking into, there is a, um, a citizen named Erin, I forget her last name, um, but what?
Anderson.
Anderson, Erin Anderson, she is interested in, um, helping to raise money for the pool, so she was, they sort of started this little subcommittee for fundraising. Um, that committee met, they're looking to possibly re-estate or apply for a new five oh one C three status, um. The, the, this Miss Anderson has, uh, a background in fundraising for nonprofits, and is full of ideas on how to get money for the pool, um, but she really knows how to do it for five oh one C three, and so that's, so that's, that's one about, you know, trying to, trying to get money for the pool. Um, they were wondering council's thoughts on naming rights, let's say, Bureau of Crematory donate fifty thousand dollars to donate to the Bat House. Let's say, beer and crematory donate fifty thousand dollars to generally a back house. Could it be the?
That's cool about it, yeah.
Could it be the, the beer and crem?
The beer and crem?
The beer and back house? What's your thought?
I'm, I'm looking up if the borough does have a naming policy.
Okay.
Um and it was because of a county commissioner that we developed, that the naming policy was developed.
Yeah.
So um just let me, let me find that and I don't know that. This chamber here is probably the only thing you can see of the borough named after someone, so um just.
So by May, I, I agree with the manager. There's, there's precautions here, but one of the things I used to do was I used to help large institutions with development and naming rights were a big deal. But there's a bit of also that would be there and they're very simple, but this needs to be thought through. You know, time, the name is in place, the extent to which the name is, the proper structure of the number of dollars and the levels of giving for the various naming rights. And we have to identify as many of those naming opportunities as possible upfront. You can't just keep adding them, you know, there needs to be a lot of structure to it, how those names are going to be displayed. But I'm sure with this particular fundraiser is experienced in this area and I think it's wonderful for that conversation to begin. You know, it's going to be interesting to see where that, to be more independent five oh one C three goes.
And I would, and at, at this point, I would question where the, who's going to be collecting the money, who's going to be holding the money, and should we get the borough treasurer involved in this?
I think it's our.
I'm sure.
Yeah. And if it's five oh one C three, it's likely going to be independent of, or of, from the Gattisburg pool.
Yep.
And they can make.
They would be able to track that through.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I know the last time the, the five oh one C three was run out of the borough office, I just want to be aware about that, that's.
I don't think that's going to be the case.
Okay, all right.
Um.
Just fifteen more.
What's that?
Just fifteen more.
You think they're ready to take? Just come, just come on. Thank you, thank you. Um they are, the rec board is looking into hosting a pumpkin carving contest this fall. That's still in the very plating stages. And Diane May, who was on the board, reached out to two churches um to volunteer at the park, but I, we'll be on volunteers. So I don't know if that's going to work out. But anyway, she did reach out to two churches to see if any volunteers would be willing to help at the parks and has, she's waiting to hear back. I yield back my time.
Counselor Agerton.
Sorry, action to offer the position of Assistant Vice Secretary slash Office Administrator to Sarah Martin at a voting rate of twenty-three fifteen hour, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, that's a summer motion.
Second.
Councilman Rick makes a motion. Councilman Mark, Councilman Agerton second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll say we won it.
Good morning, citizens. Comment?
Yes, sir. Yes. Look, my name is Mark Rose for Twelve Allison and uh I'm a member of the EAC. Um I just have concerns on the streetlight plan and there, I looked up what was in the, the attachment and so forth. And there's, aside from uh the lighting pattern, there are the things that I'm interested in, aren't really in there. Can I get those to be where they're?
I don't have them. What you, what we have is what's there. This is PTL project. All we're doing is initiating the fact that they're going to do it.
Yeah, so let me say first, I've been a resident here for most of my life. I worked for maybe uh ten years in Carlan and Newville. And uh so I did like the, the comment about the nineteen fifty-five vintage concept, the big image. But I want to say that for the last uh three, I don't know, four years, I've been a, a member of International Berkshire. And the reason I got involved was I saw a, a webinar, I attended a webinar put on by Philips Lighting, now Signify. And they had a concern with lights into the environment and to people. And so I started looking into it. And just what I found scary and, well, I don't know, scared is not the right word. It's, it's concerned and it was time to look into it. So most of the lights in the borough have been same, same lights, same places all my life. And when, when we moved to Heritage Acres, uh those lights have been there the whole time. Although they were mercury lamps at first and then into the current HPS lights. So that's fifty, sixty years ago, nineteen seventies system that was built. Uh I lived on Dale Street before that, so now I remember I come there a lot. Um we didn't know, at that time, we didn't know the effects of lighting at night, artificial light at night, AMAN is what it's called. Uh we didn't know much about, we didn't know anything about it. Uh there was research from the nineteen twenties even that talked about the effects on plants and things like that, but we didn't know. It's twenty twenty-two and we know a lot more and there's a great body of evidence that we need to light properly. In fact, there was a, a webinar I attended, Eva Schoenheimer, who is now, uh she was in Vienna, I think, now she's at Harvard. She did a third year study and her study was the one that brought the AMA to declare light, the wrong type of light at the wrong time at night carcinogenic. And they've been tracking that for over forty years of participants in that study.
Mr. Grace, you have three minutes, you have three minutes as well. But I would like to offer you the opportunity, if you want to put your comments in writing.
Yes.
Uh we could incorporate those into the maps.
Okay. Could I say running intentions? Okay. So it's twenty twenty-two, we know what we know. And so can, can we relook into what's going to be provided so that we know not only is it like safe and create a safe environment, that's really important, but that later as information, light as a signal, that we know that the lighting is being provided is going to be safe. Not only for safety's sake, but for health's sake.
We, we certainly will look into that and we'll work to make sure it is safe for the residents of the borough, I believe. Did we get a winner? Like, did it show the rest of?
That's, that's a good to be, part of the here is a good to be. And if it was.
That's not what you're looking for.
No, there's a lot. That's a lot.
Can you put that in writing? Can you just get those specific questions? We can tell that between.
Actually, I, I used to contact someone on the website and I put that in there. So you should already have.
But it doesn't, that's not always, yeah. You can have my email. Send me your questions. I'll make sure the PTL gets them. We'll proceed from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Mike?
Hello, Mike Murtha, five oh five South Market Street. I want to thank Councilman tonight and Police Department for taking action and authorizing the twenty thousand dollars expenditure. Especially when you prepare to ninety thousand dollars to sweep the streets, I think twenty thousand dollars to make them safe is a sufficient investment. I know we were asking for metrics and I have to, I can report that since we were here last two weeks ago, there's been another crash on the corner of South Market and Marble Street. Both vehicles need to be towed away. So there's some more metrics for you. And finally, perhaps Councilman Agerton and Councilman didn't realize that they were gesturing to me when they're sitting, talking about spending twenty thousand dollars. As flattered as I am to be the representation of that, uh it's not for me, it's for the entire borough and for the, probably the thousands of vehicles that drive by uh that, that intersection each day. So I want to thank you for uh for taking this action.
Yeah, and and certainly I was not meaning to push it towards you. It is for everyone. I'm six, no, I walk the street every day. So I definitely want to see the street.
Thank you.
Give you some more, Mark. Any other citizens comment?
Hi, Stephanie Inner, five oh two Allison. I've never been to one of these before, so forgive me for any faux pas, but I might commit. Um so I also wanted to make a comment on the uh plan with PTL to replace the sodium street lamps with LEDs. Um in my opinion, sodium lamps are really essential to maintain the aesthetic of historic McInnisburg. Um I moved here with my partner about two years ago and um we moved here for the charm of the town and the historic character. And um quite frankly, if there was a LED white light across the street from our house, when we had seen the house, we probably wouldn't have bid what we did bid on it. Um so I really think that having those lights is going to probably lower the property value of homes in the town. So I would just like to offer that rhetorical question to everyone, what really would be the actual taxpayer benefit of this and would it really outweigh the cost? Um in addition to that, when you put up lighting like that, as I think Mark alluded to, um you raise a bunch of questions. There are a bunch of issues, some of them called out by the American Medical Association. Um you know, people are going to be really unhappy with lights like that shining into their bedroom windows, disrupting their sleep, impairing their night vision, um distracting drivers at night. There's also a relegation with those and disorienting nocturnal wildlife and people's pets, nocturnal pets they have, cats they have, you know, looking out their bay windows at home. Um it's going to mess up their circadian rhythm. So I just believe that you have to be very careful when replacing the sodium lamps with LEDs because um some of the, some of the things that you might want to look at are correlated color temperature, blue light percent and directional shielding for the lamps. Um those are the things that tend to, if they're not installed properly, um cause the negative health issues. So, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other citizens comment? Hearing none? Any other business moving around the room?
Thank you.
I'm a official here of Sarah Agerton, cleaning a storm drain up for McInnisburg. I want to compliment you on that and keep it up. Thank you.
You can't get a sign choppy.
I can make copies.
She, we made me to, you know, take care of the sun.
I know.
No, I have nothing.
Just wanted to thank everyone. I think I saw most people at Jubilee Day and if you weren't there, I know that you had a part in it. Uh it was another, what I would term, a successful event this year. Luckily, the tornado warning did not extend me to McInnisburg and it was after nine o'clock and. Uh so, so thanks to everyone on, on the council and with the borough. We'll be meeting later this week to talk about anything that we can improve upon. But overall, uh in the times that have been in force with Jubilee Day since twenty seventeen, I think that it is a fantastic, we're on an event that we give everything we can to keep the local McInnisburg healthy, safe during an event. Uh and just kudos to the two wonderful people who seem to sign me for all the work they do and for everyone else here who has a hole in that. Thank you.
I didn't have a comment originally, but I will thank, you know, KMC Ward or whoever, he does. That's my comment. Thank you.
Two more? Thank you. Thank you to everyone who had a hand in Jubilee Day, for the successful Jubilee Day. And it was turned out to be my study. We are down to the second session on matter of personnel with no acting.